Every month, we go through this. Hey. Jean? You're up, babe. Is it you or Rachel? Called to work.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Will you stand and pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we just come to you right now and we just thank you for who you are and what you've done in our lives. Thank you for this team that we have. And Father, I just pray that tonight you would guide us with wisdom and discernment and help us make the best decisions that would benefit our city. We wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't love and care about our city. In Jesus' precious name, amen. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that recorded on?
All right. Agenda item number three, oh, number four, excuse me. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and appoint a Ward One Commissioner. Appointment to end at 7:30 PM on Monday, April 10th, 2023. Do you have just one, Mr. Ernst?
Yep.
Mr. Jason Cox, would you like to speak to the Commission?
Sure.
Come to the podium. Give the staff your name, address, et cetera.
Jason Cox. Address is 813 Keegan Way. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, others.
This is Tammy Ewing. She is our city attorney. This is Rachel. Clerk. And Jean, deputy clerk.
Give you a little bit of history on me, for those that don't know me. I grew up in the, at the western end of the Oklahoma Panhandle. Lived on a farm for years, grew up. Went to high school in Keys, graduated from Keys, and went to Oklahoma State. Graduated with a degree in microbiology. Spent a year internship in Muskogee as a lab tech. And then proceeded to spend the next 12 years in Dalhart, Texas, working at a small critical access facility. Had the opportunity to come to Stillwater Medical as a lab supervisor and moved here in 2015. Moved to Perkins in 2015. And a year later, became admin lab director for Stillwater Medical. And have been in that role ever since. I moved in June of '20 to the current location. I have three daughters in the school system. A junior, a freshman, and a sixth grader. All girls, you can see the gray hair with it, it's going to come. No, I kid, they're, they're great kids. My wife works from home as a contract financial consultant for hospitals out of Texas. Why do I want to be on the City Commission? I don't believe Perkins is growing at peak, I believe Perkins has already grown. There's challenges with it. I think we're all aware of that. As evidenced by the growth we're seeing by Williams. And yes, it's not in the city proper. But the housing addition between here and Stillwater, it's in Perkins School District. If you think the people that's moving into those houses, conservative half of them are going to have school-aged kids. They're going to be coming here. They're going to be coming here twice a day. What do we have in Perkins and what can offer, what can we offer them to stay in town? We have good businesses here. What else can we bring in to help bolster them and keep those people here? Instead of coming here to get the kids and going to surrounding town to get what they need? Lastly, I think we're called to serve. I'm not perfect. It's going to be a big job, and I know that. I'm willing to learn. I want what's best for Perkins. Questions?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hanegar, any questions? So I can grill him?
Go for it.
You guys are going too?
Go for it. He hit all the high points that I was.
He did, you know, I mean, when you say you're called to serve, that, that hit me in the feels right there. Because I think that's why we're all up here, is because we care about our city. Did any of the staff have any questions? For?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cox? Okay. Well, I make the motion that we accept or appoint, excuse me, that we appoint Mr. Jason Cox to Ward One Commissioner's seat. Did I say that right, Tammy?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll say.
No, go ahead, Jason.
I'll say in it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
What happens next? Next meeting? Yes, swearing in.
Now, doesn't he's been appointed and sworn in?
So, Mr. Cox?
The appointment will be effective before the next meeting.
Before the next meeting?
We had to get his oath, get him sworn in.
On the, on the city website, you've already read it. Go in, you'll see the oath of office, you can read that. Ms. Ewing will probably administer the oath of office at the next meeting on the 11th, at 6:00 PM. And then we do have a special commission planning meeting on the 25th at 6:00 PM that we need our whole team there, if at all possible. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll get you a cute little nameplate.
You can sit by me.
Thank you.
You can sit here if you want.
No, that's, that's your seat, I don't want that hot seat, I've got plenty of hot seats I've got.
Plenty of hot seats. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Make sure you bring your family next week.
Yes.
Pictures and hugs later. Okay. Number five, are we ready to move on, Jean? She did real call. Is that what you're gonna add?
We did, I just, yes, it just hit me.
Number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve planned use development, the PUD for Lover's Lane, senior living development located at or near Lover's Lane and Pam's Drive. Staff, import, or are we waiting for?
Do what? The City Commission had put some conditions on the engineers, and that's why we're here.
Hi, ma'am, how are you? Caitlin Purdy, 113 East 8th Ave., Stillwater. Here on behalf of the client. So I came to you guys last time and I went back to the developer and discussed, so we did, I believe, address the sidewalk concerns that we had. So the gate, there are some concerns with that, so we are proposing a sign at the entrance that says private road, dead end, no turnaround, no access to lovers. The main concern with the gate is if this gate breaks down, the only, there's, my understanding is there's only one place in Stillwater that could fix it. And if they're busy, how long will people either be locked in or locked out of the community? And if we have to call someone from OKC or Tulsa, how long, and you know, are they available to get here, to get it open in a reasonable time? And also, what if someone's in here and locked, you know, emergency access can't get there?
Okay.
That is what the developer has proposed.
Gates like this are designed, if there's a flaw, if there's something wrong, they are designed to stay open when they're broken. And I have never even heard of someone getting locked into a gated community. And on top of that, it doesn't even feel like it's a gated community because there's not a gate that, there's not a fence that goes all the way around the whole little complex. So gates like this are designed, if they malfunction, they're designed to stay open. There's a such a low possibility of a gate like that malfunctioning and staying closed. So.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing, I'm just stating.
I'm just saying, that's the research. I'm just saying that that's the research. That's where I'm looking at it at. So if I, if we ask for a gate and you're going to offer us a sign and then say that you're concerned about it malfunctioning and staying closed, that's not what the research shows. Commissioners?
The only thing I have is same thing about the gate, I don't know if they're designed to stay open, but they do have a neutral that you can open them with manually. And if that's the case, that'd be up for the tenants to contact the landlord over.
So beyond the gate, that instead of, so you've suggested the sign instead of the gate, the sidewalk material, or the ramp material, excuse me, is that is that material going to be made of?
It'll be concrete sidewalks.
It'll be just a normal concrete sidewalk, okay.
So over here, we've got the asphalt already, and then over here, we've got the concrete. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
How do you access the concrete sidewalk on the west end?
Maybe access through the entrance drive.
Through the street?
Yep. I think me and Autumn looked at that last time on that location. There is a drainage flint that goes through there, so you park it on the left foot to go on the grass.
So through the, the email communications, it was asked if it was a, a seniors' living facility?
Correct.
And then in one of the emails, it stated that it was open to anyone to live there.
The developer's target is senior living, but there is nothing that says if they can't sell it out, they're going to rent it to whoever they need.
That's not, that's not the impression we got at the last meeting. So when the, when it says seniors, and then in the email, it says it's open to anyone, that's a little I don't know, I don't know the right word I'm looking for, misdirection? To try to get something passed through? Possibly, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm putting that out there. I'm, I'm not going to be totally honest and protect my city as much as possible and ask the questions that need to be asked.
I understand, our developers' desire is for this to be an older senior living community development, but they're not going to put any restrictions on them also if there's not the market out there that they can't go rent out a unit. But that is their goal, that is their target. And they do, they have done these in other areas where they're senior living, that's who they're targeting.
Well, I think that's great, but if that's your target, but you're going to open it up to everyone, you're probably going to exclude some seniors that don't want, they want to be in a senior living area, and yet you're opening it up. They may not want little kids and everyone running around, they want what they want.
Okay, maybe I didn't explain enough, they're going for seniors, but they're not going to open it to everyone, they're going to take seniors first, is my understanding, is that your understanding?
They don't want to deed restrict it to senior only if the market doesn't pan out.
But they're not just going to, you know, I'm not going to be able to go apply and go get a house.
Right, but here's, here's, here's what I'm thinking, this is how you're marketing it to the Commission as senior living. And even the word gated community, senior gated community came up at the last commission meeting and number one, we've only got one gate, and then number two, we don't have any fencing around that. So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get my brain set straight with the wording that was used and brought to us and the planning commission as far as the wording is not matching what I'm seeing here on paper or what's coming through on the emails. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, I, I'm being just forthright to make sure that we know where we are.
I understand, I don't remember ever saying it was strictly a gated community, and I thought the question was asked last time about the senior living, and I said there is nothing at this time that restricts it to that, but maybe I was unclear about that.
I don't think that that came up in the last meeting, it came up in the emails.
Yeah.
But I don't recall other options being available at the last meeting.
I think I asked.
Okay.
But you may not have heard.
Well, that's why I say I don't recall, I'm not saying that it wasn't brought up.
Right, when I, just because I'm asking her a question doesn't mean that you guys are necessarily going to hear my question or answer.
Commissioners, I'm doing all the talking, y'all look for.
Uh, I want to go. I can wait.
Go ahead.
You sure?
The only, the, the thing that I see that is worrisome is we, I left with the hope that the gate would be part of the, the new, what you would come back with because we had discussed not having sidewalks and they were going to have to use the road. And the gate made me feel as if they would be safer because they wouldn't have through tra, and they're not going to have through traffic, but they wouldn't have added traffic. Because we talked about the people frustrated coming down the road and having to figure out how to turn around in somebody's driveway and then zoom out of there. Because that's gonna happen, I mean, it's just reality of the world. And I left with the hope that the gate would be part of what you came back with, and that would alleviate my fear of the fact that we didn't have the sidewalks like we are expecting every other new addition to have in the, in the town. So that's where my hesitation lies. But, Sarah?
I have severe concerns about public safety with gating off Pam's Drive to Lover's Lane. Lover's Lane is a high-trafficed area, and if we can get a road to go from Pam's to Lover's Lane, then that would be something that would be good for the community and for Perkins as a whole, but putting that gate there, I don't understand it, it doesn't make sense to me. I think it's going to create safety hazards and issues ongoing. In addition, the development in itself, I don't see that it is good for the community. And it's, goes with what a PUD stands for.
So you're saying two gates or no gates?
Yes, I wasn't aware of that concern last meeting.
Well, I mean, we gave you our recommendations, you guys came back with a sign. And so, those are my concerns. I don't know why you would gate off a road after you were going to put in a road so that there's no access.
Sir, I, I'm confused. The ones, the one gate is where is the hesitation, or both gates, would both, would two gates alleviate your?
I'm not giving any recommendations for what I would want to see in the future because I did that previously.
Yeah, I just was.
Nothing was done except a sign.
For, for my own knowledge, but we can talk about it later.
Yeah, so if we're going to continue this conversation about this development, if there's going to be a gate on both sides, the east and the west, then it also needs to be fenced all the way around so that it's a completely private piece of land. But ultimately, I don't think that we should be putting in a road and then dead-ending it specifically in its locale of where Lover's Lane is, because people are going to come down there and they're going to be saying.
So busy.
They're going to be saying, why did they, why did the Commission say that this was okay, why is there a gate there? And I, I'm having that same question, why is there a gate there?
And I live on Pam, and I want.
And I've had other residents that live on Pam Drive approach me and say that that isn't what they want, they don't want their road to dead-end down here. And so, those are my concerns, public safety, and then ultimately, this entire development, I don't see why it would be a benefit to the community as a whole.
Commissioner?
Who's not concerned about the gate?
Do you want to speak, sir?
I'm Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8th. Katie and I worked together on this, so I guess the original plan from the, when Mr. Wells owned this, he was just going to put a cul-de-sac in, you know, Platte, 8 Lots or something around there, so it wouldn't have gone through. As far as connections to Pam, immediately, a block to the north, we've got Kinder Wells Boulevard next, so the neighborhood can get out that way. The current Kinder Wells, Section 8, that's under construction, will have a road that extend to Lover's. So as far as getting traffic to Lover's, and from a traffic standpoint, you kind of want to, on these major roads like Lover's, you don't want a drive every 300 feet to it, you kind of want to consolidate them so that it, it helps control traffic within the neighborhood. Now, I realize it does concentrate it on Kinder Wells, and then it distributes out, but when we did Kinder Wells, it was built wider. I don't remember if it was the engineer's recommendation at that time or, or one of the commissions, but we made that so as it connects from Main to Lover's, it's more of an arterial instead of a local street. We, we did the configuration we did with the single lane out to Lover's to take care of fire, the fire concerns, we were either going to have to put a big cul-de-sac in or do the single drive like we did and talk into the Fire Marshal's office. That's how we settled on this.
What was his, what, what was the reasoning, the rationale behind that?
Well, we would.
Just had to carry off.
So the fire code requires for a dead-end road that's over 150 feet, which we are, you have to have a turnaround, an approved fire truck turnaround at the end, so it's either a 96-foot diameter cul-de-sac or it's a T-turnaround that meets certain dimensions. By putting this smaller drive-through and putting a fire gate up essentially, it, it's only for use in that instance by the emergency personnel. With regard to sidewalks, a lot of times in other communities where we've worked, when a cul-de-sac or a dead-end road has less than 500 feet of length, you don't need to put sidewalks because there's not the through traffic. People prefer to walk in the roads anyways. I see it in a lot of neighborhoods that, where I've lived and other places, and I've heard people say, I'm not walking on the sidewalk, I'm going to walk in the street. Right, wrong, or indifferent, it's just human nature. Because in some of these, you're not going through the ramps, and a lot of people park their cars across the sidewalk, so you're having to walk through the grass anyways on streets. The gate, like Katie said, is just with it being focused on seniors, if they're having trouble with their clickers or it's raining and they have to punch in a code, they, our clients found in other places, it's detrimental to the user experience. If we've got to put, if the gate is what gets us approved, we'll do the gate. So.
So if I may, you, do you live here in Perkins?
No, I live in Stillwater.
Okay. So here in Perkins, we are trying to keep people out of the street.
Right.
We want them walking on sidewalks, we're trying to have sidewalks put in citywide. There's lots of things going into that, so we are not in a position to be encouraging people to be walking in our streets. My personal opinion is that a cul-de-sac is a nicer layout than what you've proposed here, that's my own personal opinion. And gated communities are well sought after nationwide. It's more expensive to live in a gated community because of safety, and if you're not supposed to be in there, you can't get in there. So that's kind of my opinion on that as well. But to me, putting in the other gate would would not necessarily fix this for me because yet again, I don't see what this development does for the community as a whole in order to de-med a PUD.
And our client, they're, with regard to why they're trying to do this, they've got market research that shows there's a, a need for this, and so that's, it's a business decision on their standpoint, so.
I do think, I do think a neighborhood targeted towards elderly is something our community needs, I do feel that way. I am concerned about the safety issues. And, and to me, I'm thinking of my elderly grandmother trying to use her walker out on the road. It makes, I don't like the idea of that, and that's where my desire to have the sidewalks is a thing.
I understand.
But to, for me, if there is another gate where only the access of the people who are living in this community are going down that road, it alleviates some of that, it doesn't correct it, it alleviates some of it. That's just my personal.
So, I teacher, teacher. Was a teacher's aide, has children. Our new Commissioner has children.
Right.
We don't have an in-town bus route. We want sidewalks.
Yeah.
We don't want our kids walking in the streets at all.
Right.
And for me, there's not a sidewalk.
And that's why we've added the sidewalks.
And the other thing is, is Lover's Lane, you've got an entrance here, and I live here, I would much rather enter my place where I'm going to dwell through Lover's Lane than go all the way around through Pam. That just is more convenient that way.
Right.
And I have Commissioner Rabello on the turnaround than this narrow entrance right here. Because this is, to me, this is a mute point, have this right here and then not have a gate down here. So I see multiple, what the other Commissioners have brought up with the design flaws here for what fits with our community. And I think, I think we're just a little frustrated.
Right.
Because you asked for stuff and you came back with a sign, and so that's where, and then you just try to pass it through with us with a sign. It's not going to come through this Commission with just a sign.
Understand, and so, yeah, if, if we need to add the gate, we've talked to the client and they're willing to add that cost onto the project.
And a fence around it?
We didn't talk about that, but we can.
Well, that's because we, I, I'm speaking for myself. I assume there was a fence around it, so that is on me.
I just covered patios.
Yes.
And Autumn, to your point, I think if we, if this was in fact going to be a senior community and you were going to deed out it only to seniors, that would be a totally different conversation, but I find that it's overstepping my bounds to say that you have to deed this a certain way. Because here's what's going to happen, is they're going to sell it to, I don't know, let's just throw out a number, two or three seniors who are going to move in here and think that this is going to be a senior community, and then the market's going to switch, and it's not going to be that, and instead, you're going to have children living in a community where we had seniors thinking that it was going to be a senior living facility, and instead, it's going to be vastly different than what they assumed, and then we're going to have residents in here saying, hey, I, this was advertised to me this way, you, they're going to be pointing at us, you advertised it to us this way, and now it's not that way. It's creating too many potential issues that are not for the good of the community to pass a PUD the way that it is.
No, I, I agree, I, I just wanted to, like, I do think we need.
Yeah, we do need senior living, sure.
Yes, what you're saying is absolutely correct, and I agree with what you're saying 100%.
You stated that so very well. Thank you.
Words are her friends.
The words are her friend.
I'm just curious, when did you talk to the, the people about putting in the gate?
We've been talking about it since the last meeting.
I discussed it with the client before I, before they proposed the sign, I did talk to them about it, I didn't just ignore it.
Of course.
That, that was never, that, that was never put on you.
Do we have anything else?
No, I think maybe we need to align exactly what we want before bringing it back to us again. If that's what.
So, so what I'm hearing is a gate and a fence.
Did you want the cul-de-sac instead, or what do we?
I'm not proposing any.
I'm not either.
Recommendations.
Do what?
I'm not making any recommendations, I'm.
Justin?
I need to make a vote.
I was just going to say, the the request here is for modification of your zoning, where it is to allow this.
I was just gonna say, the, the request here is for modification of zoning, or is this to allow this, this, um, complex, this use, not use of the land, but to allow this, the plan, the project that they propose. You can, you, you can't tell them what use they have to make of it.
Correct.
But you can certainly, as I believe you have and did at the last meeting, say, okay, we like senior living and this is what we think that would look like. You can also say, this is not, uh, something that we believe, whatever you're proposing, whatever they came in is, is, uh,
Appropriate.
Appropriate for a deviation from our zoning code. You can say, I'd rather you just apply the zoning code the way it is than to make these exceptions for this. Or, uh, because that's, that's, that's essentially what they're asking you, is to make exceptions from the zoning code for what they're proposing and you would have to find, you know, in your mind, you have to feel like that's in the best interest of the community. There's no safety, welfare issues, health issues with, with the plan. So just to give you an overall, you know, view, your options as I see it at this point are to have a, a motion to approve or disapprove the entire plan or to have a motion to table the issue to another meeting to allow them to, um, bring back a different plan.
And, and the, the variance we're asking for, the way Perkins' code is written, there was only one resident, there's three zoning districts in Perkins, residential, commercial, industrial. The residential allows everything from single-family to multifamily, but a way it's written, you can only have one structure on a lot. So, so that's the request, there's no in-between of how do you treat a duplex versus a single-family versus apartments? And so.
You're trying to deviate from one principal building to four principal buildings.
Exactly, that's, that's the variance we're asking for, but the way the code is written, the only way to do that is through a planned unit development. And so, so that's why we're here. And I ask that if we are gonna table it, that we have the conditions that, you know, if it's the gate and the fence and we address that and we come back with it, it's not, well, now the senior or the way it is, I, I, I just.
I don't think that they can tell you what they will do.
Okay. I, I'm just asking, I, I'm, I'm asking if you're willing to do that, we would love to hear it.
And then the other thing, Stephen, is that you're also asking for deviation to allow a lot area.
Yes, I saw that too.
Per unit, the per unit.
Yeah, to decrease the requirement on that, is our footage.
And Tammy, can you please remind me on how the utilities would work on this development?
The, um, the, this is private road and private sewers.
Yeah, so what we're proposing.
As far as the electrical, um, that's all from, what do you mean?
I mean.
I do know that, cause I remember looking at the private road asking.
I mean, for electric, we're proposing, th- there's existing underground infrastructure in the south side of this. So we would bring a line down the middle with transformers to serve each, each direction. Um, sewer all the onsite, cause it's effectively apartments could be private and a line that comes and ties into a manhole down at the northeast corner of the apartments to the south. And then the water, we'd set a master meter here at the entrance and there'd be services, both domestic and these will have a, a residential sprinkler system in each unit for fire suppression. So that's how we'll handle those three. And there weren't, they're not proposing gas, so we all electric.
All electric?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, from just an operations and maintenance standpoint, you don't have to worry about pilot lights going out or a gas leak or anything.
I'm with Commissioner Rabello and Commissioner Futh and Commissioner Haniger when it says Lover's Lane senior development. I, I think Commissioner Rabello stated it very, very well as to if we label this a certain way and then it deviates from that, that's gonna come back on us up here.
Because, because you're wanting, you'd want to be able to say, we put the parameters on this that we were able to put on it so that it would be used for seniors.
And I, I understand that you told us that we can't really say that, can't really tell them how to label it, but that's how it's presented to us.
You wanna create something that is attractive to seniors.
Right.
Yeah.
That's how it's presented to us.
Right.
And that's what, that's how it was presented to the planning commission, which approved it based on that wording. And so that's not, uh, what I'm saying is, is it feels like it's not fair to our planning commission to hear that, to see that, to read it. Then they approve it and they bring it to us and then we hear that, we see it, we read it and then, then something else is brought up and said, well, other people can live there too.
Well, then, um.
That's me that owes them a huge.
Do what?
That's me that owes them a huge apology.
I don't think it's an apology, Bob, I think it's just.
Clarifying questions.
I don't think it's out of our fault.
No, but.
I don't think that's on you, Bob.
Um, just procedurally, if you wanted to go back through the planning commission, then you could deny this PUD and then if they applied again, it would go back through the planning commission, does that make sense? Um, if you continue this to another, or, uh, table it, then it, then you're. And, and I will also say that, uh, I, I think it's a healthy thing sometimes for you guys to disagree with the planning commission. I don't think that's necessarily what's happening here, I don't, I'm, uh.
Okay, that's happening out.
But if, if that's your concern, you can do, you can, you can structure that.
I, I am not disagreeing one bit with our planning commission. I think the presentation is skewed just a tiny bit, that's all. The way we perceive things or hear things, so it could just, it's, could be just the whole group of us. And I just wanna make sure it's right before, through something for our city, we want what's best for our city. So.
Mayor, I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion to deny the planned use development for Lover's Lane, senior living development located out or near Lover's Lane and Pam's Drive.
I second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Ms. Mancera?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn tonight's special meeting.
I second.
Does she take your crown?
I get to second that, I get to second.
Yes.
I picked that up on the last meeting.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Thank you, Jean. You still asked me.
Tammy?
I need a cookie.
Thank you so much for your advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Absolutely.